Councilwoman Carr, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Dewitt. Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flin?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Good evening, everybody. We have a good crowd tonight, so I want to say thanks for being here and welcome. We're going to start tonight with public comment on agenda items. If there's members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time. Hello, Kathy McGrath, how are you?
Oh, Mary.
Nice to see you.
How do you know?
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Kathy McGrath, and I happen to be a member on the Film Fest Committee, and I see this here, so of course, that is a no-brainer. Go for it. And I also, I have met this young lady that's going to get the proclamation. We're so happy to have her here.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
There's been a motion to accept in a second. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one correction on item M in the agenda. There was a Scrivener's error.
Tyco?
Ann Wright can explain it.
Scrivener error.
No, it's Scrivener's error.
We've got to make sure, then we can move along. Thanks.
You have a revised copy of the resolution in front of you, but the public doesn't have the benefit of the knowledge.
I know.
Good evening, Ann Wright, Finance Director. Yes, on that resolution that's in the packet that's attached to green sheet 19-08-240, which is the last item on consent, the one in front of you replaces that. The one that's in the packet implies that the transfer is among general fund accounts, but it's $19,000 coming from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel?
So moved as amended.
Okay. And a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations, and we'd like to welcome our special guest, Gertra, Gertrude, excuse me, Naten Bwaya. I'm probably not saying that exactly correct, and I apologize, but you can call me Peter Simons if you'd like, or Peter Simmons. It'll be your choice.
I don't think so. Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. I want to thank you very much for inviting us here, and I also want to recognize Arlene Simmons, and, no, Arlene Hunter, and John Dahmer and their staff for doing a great job, and we're moving forward, and it's quite evident. One thing that I saw was Thad's article in the Banner where you're going from house to house to house, and to me, that's a working, that's a working official job, and thank you all for doing that and making our, and looking forward to making our city. I don't want to say it great again, better than, but anyway, thank you all so much. And it gives me a great deal of pleasure now to introduce Wayne and Sandy Hempstead. Would you please come up here, and her guest, our guest, from Uganda. And Sandy's going to give you a little background.
Thank you.
Did you want me there?
Wherever you're more comfortable.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having us here today. For those of you that are not as familiar with Rotary International, we're a very large international organization that has a presence in more than 200 countries around the world. We have a strong presence here in Benita Springs, and we're really happy to welcome a youth exchange student. This is part of our effort to promote world peace and understanding, one teenager at a time. And I'm really pleased to present our host daughter for the year. She'll be here until June, and her name is Naten Bwaya.
Welcome.
Nice meeting with you a little bit earlier, and on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, we'd certainly like to welcome you, proudly present on, and congratulate you for your selection for being the youth student exchange program, and extend some very warm welcome and best wishes for a wonderful learning experience and stay. It's an honor to welcome you to our beloved city. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, August 7, 2019, which you have to know is my 20th anniversary as well. Thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening to you all. I've said so many thank yous, and nice to meet yous to so many people, and it's embarrassing to say that I can't remember some of their names, but Maya Angelou said it best. A person may forget what you did to them or what you said to them, but never how you made them feel. Since I've been here, it's been a week and two days. I have amazing parents, and for a 17-year-old girl to be meeting the mayor and council members, it's just, it's like a dream come true. And I just want to say thank you to all of you, and during my stay, I hope I can get to know all of you better, and I'm really, really glad to be here.
Thank you so very much. Okay, what did we get? Pictures. Steve, do you want to come on?
Nope.
Normally, we get a noise that sounds like the battery's running off, but they say, "Taking care of that thing." Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you so very much, and God bless you. Welcome. Welcome, and thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing. Thank you very much. God bless. Thank you so much. And we're now going to move on to item B, which is a presentation of a PDNE study. Have I, I've heard that somewhere before. A PDNE study by the Florida Department of Transportation, and this is green sheet 19-08-235. Matt?
So, Mr. Mayor, we've got Stephen Andrews from the Florida Department of Transportation here. This is a kind of a joint study that is in Benita Springs from Benita Beach Road on Old 41, south to the Collier County line, and then actually extends down into Collier County to US 41. So they're looking at a multi-jurisdictional study to see what kind of improvements can be done, made there. So with that, Stephen. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for saying that, Matt. I could have let you did this, and that's going to be a tough act to follow after that young lady. Anyway, I am Stephen Andrews, I'm the project manager for this project for Old 41, also known as County Road 887 PDNE study. Also have with me Matt Dawkins here. He's with RK&amp;K. He's my consultant PM. They're performing the work on behalf of the department. We'd just like to thank you for allowing us to be here today to present this project. Just give you a little information on it, so let's get started. This is a unique project, like Matt was saying. It's two projects, it's kind of like two projects in one, and it's in two different counties. This project starts in Collier County at US 41, and it ends in Benita Springs at Benita Beach Road. It's approximately 2.7 miles, and we're fully aware that Benita Springs maintains that road in Lee County. So I met with Matt and Trinity Scott for Collier County last year, and we kind of field reviewed the project, and kind of gave me an opportunity to let Trinity hear Matt, some of their issues and concerns in Lee County, their portion of the project, and likewise with Trinity, to hear what Matt was saying about Benita Springs and what they expect, and some of the issues they may have in their county. So we had a good meeting. Keep in mind, this is not a state road. This is not DOT's road. This is our system for us, so we want to make sure we have both counties buy-in on this, and we want to, you know, kind of make sure that we're doing exactly what you want us to do. So, you know, both of them had different desires, and starting with Collier County. Collier County, they're looking for a more capacity project going from two to four lanes because they have a lot of truck traffic, and they do want to enhance safety by providing pedestrian bicycle lanes as well. And then on your side of the county, Benita Springs looks for a more multimodal approach with our complete streets kind of mimicking what you have north of this project, and, you know, connectivity, and also desires for redevelopment. Activities to date, we've had a kickoff meeting internally with our folks at DOT and with our consultant, and likewise, we've had one with the NPO for the county of Collier County and for Lee County, and now we're having one here for you. Our agency coordination is a little different than, this is different from me. Usually PDNE study, we kind of have meetings with the boards in the county or something like that. We have after our public meetings or hearings, but, you know, because there's two different counties involved, and they both feel that, you know, communication will be better, we're going to do something different this year, and we're kind of having a meeting before each meeting. Before the public hearing, we'll have a meeting with you to let you see what we have, the material, and if you have any questions before we go to the public. So this is a little different. We do anticipate a public meeting workshop, spring 2020, and public hearing, winter 2020. And so everything I just said is pretty much on this schedule you see. One thing that I haven't talked about is we do look to have, anticipate approval by OEM, which is Office of Environmental Management, sometime spring 2021. So what's the next step, or where are we, what are we currently doing right now? Well, we just, this will be the last kickoff that we've had, and we sent out a newsletter two weeks ago to the people along the corridor and to the public officials as well. And so now we're collecting data to develop our typical sections and to develop our build alternatives. And that's pretty much it. If you're interested in following this project, the project website is below there. It's up and running. Everything that I've talked about, spoke of today, and more, is on the website, and we're trying to keep that updated periodically, so it's a good idea to follow that. You can always email me. It's good for documentation for us if you do email us, so, you know, we can have a record of everything. But as always, you can call me as well. I'm not in the Swayo office. I am in the Barto office, so, but call me anytime. This is just an update for you. Kickoff.
Great. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
If I might.
Peter?
Yeah. Thank you, Stephen. Good to see you again. Just a few comments. One is, I think one thing we've all learned as time has gone by, that the problem on traffic is often not in the pipe, but it's at the flange of the pipe. It's at the intersections, and that's what we're learning on Beach Road and US 41, working together thankfully with the great FDOT presence here. I know Lee County has learned that in areas, and I know also Collier, for example, down on Pine Ridge. As things have evolved, the concept of more capacity by actually dealing with where the critical need is, which is at the intersections. So I'm assuming and hoping that a big part of what you're doing here is dealing with the intersection of Beach Road and Old 41 in Benita Springs, as well as US 41 and Old 41 in Collier County. So that's one point. The second thing is, I've had the sense that Collier has fast-tracked Veterans Parkway, the new road, and I just want to thank them for that, because that's going to be another road that's going to go east-west, and to my lights, we're in need of more roads, more connectivity, more grid. That's what's been missing here for years. The example I always give is, if you go to the beach in Naples, packed with people, and you go from 41 to the beach, there's never a traffic jam. Why? Because there are scores of roads that go to the west. And what we've had here is no one's fault. Who knows what we would have done if we were doing this 30 or 40 years ago. We've got a very limited system. We've got a lot of gated communities that you can't get through, and the big job for us now is developing that grid network, developing connectivity to free up and create more capacity. So we've had chats about this at the NPO. I'm a member of the Lee County NPO. So I wanted to thank you and thank L.K. Nandem, the whole team, for everything you're doing at FDOT.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Peter. Counsel? Amy?
No, I just want to, I very much appreciate the outreach that you're suggesting you're going to have, where you're going to have outreach to us before you have the public hearings, so that our residents can interact with you and really understand the road that we're going. And I know we have a long way to go, but the more we can involve the community and get their opinion, I think the happier we're all going to be. So I appreciate that outreach that you're suggesting, which is, as you say, a little bit different than the usual procedure you've used in the past. So thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation. It was, it answered a lot of questions already in my mind. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Staff, anything to add? No? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to mayor and council member items. Item A is a request from Senator Joe Gruders to utilize city council chambers as part of the Florida Immigration Listening Tour. Derek and I spoke with Senator Gruders' staff. I don't know which other city halls will be utilized around the state, but I can let you know that it's, they'll be going to Sarasota and Venice, St. Petersburg, Orlando, Jacksonville, Melbourne, and they advert, the advertisement here is for Fort Myers, but it's here at Benita Springs City Hall. And Derek, is there anything you want to add?
My understanding is that it'll be in both city halls of St. Augustine and the city of Venice. We did, I did speak with the staff for Senator Gruders to determine whether or not this was a partisan event or whether it was part of his official duties. Staff indicated it is a part of his official duties. He's gathering information ahead of the legislative session on the issue of immigration, that he used his political action committee to spend those funds for distributing information regarding the tour rather than taxpayer dollars. But that was the extent of the conversation we had.
Right. So Senator Gruders reached out to me to ask if, if city hall, to see if it was available and if we'd be willing to accommodate him, so I said that I would, and I'd bring it in front of council, so that's where we are.
Derek, just to clarify, so this expiration that you just had, does that say that it's permissible, or is there any issue with?
The city doesn't have, doesn't have a policy regarding that. I mean, obviously, your positions have all been, you've been elected a nonpartisan is the position of the city. Question came up because there seemed to be PAC money being used to advertise the tour, and speaking with the Senator's office, it's not some political action committee, general political action committee promoting this. It is his personal PAC. He just indicated he did not want to use taxpayer funds from his office to spend, send out advertising, felt it would be more appropriate to distribute through means that he had otherwise available. If we, if we were, if this was a partisan event, then we would be, I think it would be prudent for us to develop a policy to determine whether we would open up city hall public offices to all partisan events, or we have to come up with some kind of policy on the issue. We currently do not have a policy on that issue. However, we have utilized city hall for local delegation members who have asked for permission to utilize city offices for outreach before. But this is the first time we've had a request from someone who's outside the constituency locally of Benita Springs.
Peter, if you have any?
Yeah, two points quickly. One is, we have a member of council who in effect, you know, extended an invitation. I'm never going to be in a position of saying no to that. It's already happened. But I think that going forward, we do need a policy, and I'll just give you a little context. You know, a few months ago, I had asked if we had, there was a bike group that had formed that was an advocacy group, and could they have a meeting at city hall? And the advice I was given was, we first needed, the answer was no, because there wasn't city business, but if we're going to make an exception, it would have to go to city council first. So, you know, I think this is already down the road, so be it. But I think in the future, we ought to have a policy with respect to this, just how we deal with it, a written policy.
And I think that's absolutely fine.
Yep.
Of course.
I'll take that as direction to move forward, develop a policy, and bring it back to you at a future meeting.
Sure, and you've probably have experienced this with some other cities, or have you gone through this process before?
It is generally, generally, these kind of events are, you're limited to government only, and on occasion, I've dealt with requests by like the League of Women Voters to hold candidates' nights and things like that. But having a policy that's, you know, nondiscriminatory is the key to have, to doing that. This, I've been assured about the Senator's office, this was government-to-government request, but we'll go forward and develop a policy to deal with these scenarios.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do we need a vote, or, I mean, we?
No, I'll bring, I'll give you a direction. I'll come back with something, and then you can tweak it how you feel is appropriate.
Okay, great. Thanks. We're going to move on now to the public hearing, and public comment is allowed. Who wants to tee this up for us? And I'll, item A is a request to vacate the southeasterly three feet of the northwesterly 10 feet less, the southwesterly 25 feet, and less the northeasterly 15 feet of a drain easement lying in Lot 45, unrecorded Carolands, section 30, Township 7, excuse me, Township 47, south, range 25, east, green sheet 25-1908-241, and if I made a mistake, I apologize. You're up, Jay.
Would you read that again, please?
You're up, Jay. How you doing?
Good. Mayor, Counsel, this is a fairly simple request. In 1991, long before the city even existed.
You want to repeat what we're dealing with here, though, Jay?
So what happens, there's a drain easement that is 20 feet wide, 10 feet on either side of a lot line, on two different lots. And in 1991, the applicants built their house, and the setbacks in Lee County were seven and a half feet. During construction, someone noticed that seven and a half foot setbacks meant they were two and a half foot into the easement. The thing is, is that Lee County acknowledged that, gave them letter 91 that says, "You can go ahead at your own risk and do this, and we'll solve it later." They built the house. They have not sold their home. Now, 30-odd years later, they went with their home on the market, and they realized this is causing a cloud that needs to be resolved. Simply put, the request is, the reason that legal seems a little odd, is only for the portion of the house that is in the easement, so that in the front and the back, it's the full width of the easement. It's only that portion that gets into this. The relief is, would be the bare minimum, and since it is 10 foot under the lot, even though we're taking three feet off, there's still 17 feet of easement. We've had Public Works look at it. They have no objection, and we have no objection.
So moved.
There's been a motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Okay, item B. This is a public hearing regarding the grant application submittal for the Rebuild Florida Voluntary Home Buyout Program to allow for citizen participation, public comment, and input to be collected to determine community interest in participating in the program, and this is green sheet 19-08-023, excuse me, 233. Hello there. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Ellie McEwen. I'm Public Works staff, and I'm here tonight to hold the public hearing for the FDEO, which is Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, CDBGDR voluntary buyout program. It's our grant application submittal. We're required as part of the application process is to have the public hearing. We have concentrated on the Downs Quinn Street area, but we're also accepting applications for all areas of Benita Springs that had Hurricane Irma damage. So far, we've had four applications outside of the Downs, excuse me, Quinn Street area. In order to, to have everybody know about what we're trying to do, we sent, we started a couple of weeks ago, we sent out about 200 letters to the property owners in the Downs Quinn Street area. We published the information in both English and Spanish, and then July 29th and 30th, Monday and Tuesday of last week, we canvassed the neighborhood. Public Works had help from Neighborhood Services, from the Communications Department, from the Administrative Services Department, as well as volunteers from the community pool. There was also bilingual staff that was part of those folks that went out. We, on August 1st and August 6th, we held public workshops. We had, both of those workshops, we had total probably 100 people show up, so it was very well attended. And during both of those workshops, we had bilingual staff that helped communicate. So far, to date, we have 61 applications for voluntary participation, and we are starting with the collecting data from the, and documentation from the homeowners, so that we can include that in our application. The application is due to Tallahassee on the 15th of August, so the next Thursday. And so with that, what we'd like to do is open up the public hearing for a public comment, and that public comment will be included in the application.
Okay? Great. Thank you. Counsel, anything at this point, or? Okay. Great. Arlene?
If there's any member from the public like to come forward.
Sure. Anybody here from the public that'd like to come forward to discuss this, or any comments? Yes? Yes, please.
No.
No? Then we'll do that late, a little bit later on? Not, not right now, but anybody on this issue right now? Okay. Seeing none?
Peter, I just wanted to thank staff for all the hard work. A lot of volunteer hours have been put in this, and thank you as well for getting out there. The staff is, you know, they're wearing this on their sleeve, and they should be. This is so important. So thanks to everybody.
And I would just say absolutely thank you. We covered a lot of ground. We, I wouldn't ask you to really share all of the statistics, because I didn't, I didn't ask for that, so, but in a sense, our success rate was pretty high with people that actually were home when we knocked on their door. I would say probably, in my case, probably 70% or so of the folks that, doors that I knocked on were actually home. I actually got to speak with one-on-one, and there were a lot of different conversations, and the workshop, and the charrette, right? And the charrette last night, and the, you know, we're going to walk through it one step at a time. It's, it's so, as I said before, it's so easy to want to go from step A to step Z, but we have to focus on step B, and that's right where we are, and that's not meant to be tongue-in-cheek or glib. It's honestly meant, there's a lot of steps in this process, and we're at step A, and we're going to proceed to step B, and thank you for everybody that's been involved and will be involved in getting us to step B, because you know what's, you know where this is going. When we get to step B, we're going to focus on step C and nothing else. So thank you, everybody, very much. Is there anything, Arlene or Matt, that you'd like? Is there anything, Arlene or Matt, that you'd like to add, or?
What we'll continue to do in this process is, staff will be calling those folks who've expressed interest and give us forms in the next few days, and we'll be, with help of our bilingual staff, as well as our consultants' bilingual staff. So we'll be making sure we get all the follow-up documents now as well.
Absolutely.
Just a matter of formality, but maybe close the hearing, because it is a federal program.
Nope, absolutely, okay. We're going to, unless anybody else has something, Amy?
I just want to add my thanks to the staff, and, and I have to say that this is a very proud day for me, having been informed about the process that we, as a city, went through, to engage people who are in need and to help them to make application. And I pray and hope that we will be getting funding, we know how tenuous that can be. And hopefully, if we get the funding, that we will help some people. And I think we owe everyone that participated in this a very big thank you. I don't, I'm not sure other communities would do so much engagement and outreach. So I'm very proud to be representing Bonita Springs here, and thank you to everybody that participated.
Absolutely. Counsel, anything else? Matt, did you have something else?
Just about closing the hearing.
Yeah, okay. We're going to close the hearing, okay? Hearing is, hearing is closed. Okay, now we're going to, and anything else, Matt, that you'd like to add, or anybody else?
No, I would just echo, you know, the success rate on knocking the doors was, seemed to be very, much higher than I would have expected.
Right, Arlene?
I would just like to add, as well, I'd like to thank our staff that stepped up and walked with us in the community. We had, as was mentioned, we had even folks from our community pool who stepped up and helped us as well. So we appreciate everybody taking this to heart and working with us. It's a team effort, so.
Absolutely, great, thanks, everybody. Okay, now we're going to move on to the first reading of the following ordinance. And this is an ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for retail gas pump security measures, establishing security measure requirements for owners and operators of retail gas pumps, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date, and this is green sheet 19-08-243.
So moved.
It's been a motion to accept in a second, is there further discussion?
Yeah, I actually had a question. Line number 27, it says, alternates that can go. It says, "A device or system that encrypts the customer payment card information in the scanning device." A lot of the problems with these skimmers is they're putting something on that's scanning the card in addition to the scanner that's there. So I don't see how this would actually help from having a skimmer on the pump.
Which, which?
23.
Section 26-71, fuel pump security requirements, section B, the alternatives, number two.
Mike, would you mind explaining that again?
So, to me, this says, "A device or system that encrypts the payment card information in the scanning device." So when you scan your card, it's not just sending like card number 1, 2, 3, 4. It's sending, you know, gibberish to anybody else unless they have the encryption code. But, all these skimmers are adding something else on the pump, that when you put your card in, it's also scanning your card. So they're still getting your information before it goes to the pump. So to me, this doesn't seem like it would help at all.
This, the particular language involved was developed with the Sheriff's Department, in coordination with them, the language they asked for. Let me, let me follow up on that question before we get to the, the public hearing on that and see if I can get an answer for it.
Okay.
Excellent.
But everything else sounded good to me, so.
Okay, thanks, Mike, for that, very much. What do we want to do on this? Do we want to, we're going to, we're going to advance it to a second reading, correct? Okay, so is there a motion? There's been a motion to accept in a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Mobile right outside on 41 there. They got all new pumps, and it's very different. So there's no tape anymore like that. So I don't know how that's, if that matters.
It probably has the keys. They talk about having a set, a special key just for that service station, where a lot of them had, you could get a master key that would open up all the pumps, so if somebody would get that, and they'd go around and put these skimmers in.
Okay.
So they want to have keys just for that one service.
Okay.
Derek, you've got this language from the Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Not that the points went up well taken.
And so Lee County did it, does it not apply to us being in Lee County, or we have to adopt this in order?
It doesn't apply to us in Lee County, because Lee County's, this is identical to Lee County's ordinance, because they worked with the Sheriff's Office as well. The difference is that Lee County's ordinance is limited to only unincorporated areas. And, you know, obviously, the Sheriff's Office is trying to have a uniform set of regulations, so that's easier for them to enforce. When their, when their officers are out there citing people, they'll be able to cite it for effectively the same code and the same code sections as everyone else. But I'll follow up on your question regarding the scanner.
Okay, great. Any further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 11, which is the first reading of the following zoning ordinance. Item A is an addendum with Exhibits B and C, a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Bonita Fort Myers Corporation to rezone approximately 99-plus-or-minus acres from AG2, RM2, C2, and commercial plan development to commercial plan development located on the south side of Bonita Beach Road, west of old US 41, east of Race Track Road, and north of the Mediterranean RF, excuse me, RPD Bonita Springs, Florida 34135, providing for an effective date, green sheet 19-08-244. John Dolmer, good evening.
Counsel, real quick, just for your edification, this will also be a public hearing, because rezonings over 10 acres require two public hearings. It was advertised as a public hearing, and the green sheet does denote it as a public hearing. For whatever reason, it was just mistakenly placed as only a first reading. So there will be an opportunity for the public to comment at this meeting.
Great, thank you.
The attorneys always steal my thunder.
Oh, sorry.
Once again, before we were so rudely interrupted, John Dolmer, good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. We do have a very brief presentation tonight, the applicant is also here, I'll allow them the opportunity to make a few comments if they so choose. I know that this is not going to be the main focus of their presentation, they'll have a much more robust discussion with you at the second reading. However, because this was going to have public comment in a public hearing, we did also want to have a little bit of a presentation for you tonight. So, I'll give this opportunity to the applicant to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of City Council. By way of introduction, my name is George Powell, I'm an attorney with Ackerman at their Naples office located in Mercado. I'm here representing the Bonita Fort Myers Corporation and its parent corporations and the Haveneck family. With me today is Isidore Haveneck, and also Paula McMichaels from Hole Montez, which is our engineer for the firm, for this application. I'm not going to take a lot of your time, and I do appreciate you're giving the time to me today. I want to give you an overview of where we started and how we got here, and why this process is a little bit out of sequence in what you're normally used to. Racing started at the current location in 1957. The Haveneck family bought the property in 71, took all the buildings down, left the racetrack where it is today, and rebuilt the building that you see now, which was completed in 72. It's about 275,000 square feet. In 81, they were a paramutual licensee, they're still a licensee, and that is what enabled them to do the dog track. In 81, they were allowed to open up a card room, so they have a paramutual license to have a card room that operates. And as you all know, Amendment 13 was adopted, or was passed by the voters of Florida in November of 2018, and that ends racing, live racing in the state of Florida going forward. The last race at the racetrack today will be May, Sunday, May 3rd, in 2020. And after that, live racing ceases to operate at that track and across Florida, depending on what their license schedule is. If you've been to the building, you will know that it reflects its 1971 construction. Much of the building is, is not functionally efficient, it's not environmentally efficient, there's a lot of issues with it. So, the Amendment 13 had a carve-out in it, and it said that if you were a paramutual licensee in 1981, you could continue to have your paramutual operations at your site, even though live dog racing had come to an end. So the card room can continue to operate, and the simulcasting can continue to operate. And what Bonita Fort Myers is looking to do is construct a new 30,000-square-foot card room, simulcasting, and sports bar on the nine-plus-acre site at the southwest corner of Railroad and Bonita Beach Road. We've designated this as Phase 1. We have a serious time constraint. We have about 250 to 275 employees, which fluctuates with in-season, out-of-season, whether they have live racing or they have simulcasting in the card room only. Since the operations must cease by May 3rd, they are looking to open their new facility as close to May 3rd, before May 3rd as possible. They've got to put an entirely new security system in, they've got to have a dry opening, get the employees used to the facility. So when dog racing stops, live dog racing stops on May 3rd, they can continue the card room and simulcasting, simulcasting operation. In coordination with their general contractors who have been selected, and actually, the building plans have been submitted to the department for review, they need to have an approval for this project around mid-September in order to have nine months to complete the construction. So we're having this first reading tonight. We've already had one neighborhood information meeting. The second neighborhood information meeting will be held at the facility on the 19th of August. We have a zoning board hearing on the 20th of August, and we are back here for second reading on the 21st of August. We have been working with the staff and management since January to get together our plan, our Phase 1 plan, and now we've looked at a Phase 2 plan, and essentially, Phase 2 is nothing more than all the other property that's not within the nine-plus-acre tract at the southwest corner that I described. I can tell you that when the CO is issued, within one year after the CO is issued, the existing facility will be dropped, it'll be razed and scraped, and the track will continue in place, because it's in really good condition, but the building and the kennels will be gone. We will be leaving some maintenance buildings there, because we have to continue to mow, maintain the property, we need a place to store that. So what will happen is, is that you'll have the card room, simulcasting, and sports bar up on Bonita Beach Road, at Race Track Road, the balance will be cleared with the, for the buildings, except for the buildings that stay on-site to help us maintain the physical property itself. So that's the, was before you, and that's what we've been doing to try to react to the termination of live dog racing this May, May 20.
Thank you for that. Counsel, questions or comments, or?
Is John, is John going to get up, or?
Okay. John, you want to?
Okay.
Kick us off here, I guess?
That was a pretty good outline of how we got here, and what I have prepared for you tonight is just a brief outline of the schedule, which Mr. Powell outlined to us earlier. We are here tonight for the first reading, zoning board on the 20th of this month, and you see this project again at your next meeting on the 21st. A little more...
I just want to back up there real quick, just for Izzy's benefit, I want to, the first reading is at City Council, August 7th, 2019, Mayor Simmons' 20th anniversary, just making sure.
We'll make a note of that in the next presentation.
Today's my anniversary.
I don't want to hear about any vacation schedules, so everybody's...
My anniversary, too.
Congratulations, eh? And Councilwoman Carr's anniversary, so, dates are dates, and, you know, I just wanted to point that out.
We'll make a note for the next presentation.
And they call it the days between, right? If anybody knows what that means, between August 1st and August 9th. Yeah, right, exactly. But thank you. August 7th is the first reading, thank you. That's today.
So this is, this is what we're going to be discussing. There's about 99 acres of this property in total, approximately nine acres in change will be included as Phase 1, which will include the only proposed new building on this project, a 32,000-square-foot in change restaurant with a couple of uses in there. Mr. Powell also talked about how we'll address a portion of Phase 2, but when we start talking about new construction, new buildings, new uses, those will be handled through a separate application at a future date. This is the property we're discussing. Yellow is Phase 1, this is where their proposed building will go. The rest of the property is in the red hatching, and that includes the existing track, parking lot, apartments, and other buildings on-site. This is their proposed site plan. For your reference, Bonita Beach Road is on the left side of the screen, and Race Track Road is on the top of the screen, so it's turned sideways, as we normally present. This is an elevation that they have submitted to us, but we'll look at, generally looking southeast from Bonita Beach Road's right-of-way, includes some of the landscaping in front of the proposed building. This is looking directly at the building that they have submitted to us. And this is the cross-section to show what will happen between Bonita Beach Road and the travel lanes and the proposed building. So you can see where the vegetation's going to be located, also where the building is going to be in relation to that. And it's basically just looking down the right-of-way as opposed to looking at it in the previous view. This is their landscape plan, it looks much better as a plan, not so much as a slide, it looks a little busy here. And if you look at those areas of cross-sections, which show here, here, and here, those are detailed on this page. So you can see how each portion of the building property will relate to that right-of-way. And I know that it's much easier to see if it's sitting in front of you than it does on a screen, but these are the documents that we are currently reviewing, and we will be presenting to you on the 21st. I know that was very quick and to the point, but I did want to familiarize you a little bit with the current proposal and give you an opportunity for any initial questions before we really got into the second public hearing.
Move to second reading.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to advance to the second reading.
Now, you'll also, once you've got a second, you want to open it up for public comment.
Yes. And I want to see if there's any more, there's been a motion and a second, is there further discussion on counsel at this time?
I just want to make sure...
Yes, Amy, and then Fred.
...understand the situation for why we have this kind of odd schedule here, you know, rather than going to a regular zoning meeting and all that, is that the applicant is anxious to get the new building done by May, whatever it is, May 2020. But I thought that they also, that it is, that the regulation allowed them to continue the card room into the present building, so if the, so if the schedule slipped a little bit, they would still be able to run their business, is that correct?
If, for some reason, we're looking at a delay, no one's looking to stop or cease the cardroom usage?
No, 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 this is, I'm just saying that I'm sure that, I'm just, want to understand why we're doing this in an irregular, I mean unusual, not irregular, unusual fashion. And that the Community Development Department is accommodating the applicant because they are anxious to get in May 2020.
Yeah, there is one, there's one additional factor there. When they originally submitted their application, they submitted it only for the nine acres, which only required one public hearing instead of two public hearings. After meeting with staff and looking at the project, we, we thought that's particularly because of the quadrant plan and the requirements for connectivity, we wanted to see the entire project within the scopes. It was at the request of staff to bring the entire 100 acres in. We decided, because they had no plans for the second, what we're calling the second phase, we would, we would delineate the requirements for the second phase while identifying what uses they were going to have, when the building was going to come down. And so it was at staff's request to bring the whole project in, so you had a lot more focus and control, that there was an additional time delay. They would have met the standard requirements and been able to come in, in the, in the proper order that's typically allowed. None of what's being proposed now is impermissible, but the additional time constraints and the changing was at staff's request in order to get that additional 100 acres in, which they accommodated after some back and forth. So, so we've asked them to add additional things to their request that they had not planned on adding, and that is what complicated the schedule further.
So there was cooperation between staff and applicant? Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, just briefly. I would hope that their architect and planners can look at McGarvey's buildings out of Burnwood, because they've got very similar construction to what you're doing, but they're, they've got some banding and things that would really enhance your building, it really wouldn't cost very much money to, to make it really look nice, put a good, good face on Bonita Beach Road. face on Benita Beach Road. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. Okay, counsel, anything else? Mike?
Yeah, you'd said that we weren't really looking to do anything about Phase Two, but I noticed there were conditions on Phase Two already, such as striking out event uses such as fairs and carnivals and things like that. Is that our request or the applicant's request? Because I know, I've been to carnivals and fairs and circuses there, so why would we be looking at limiting that?
When we were having discussions on Phase Two, we know that there's a number of uses that have been going on in that parking lot or that portion of the site for many years, predating a lot of the required approvals. And so we'd requested that they provide us a list of all those uses that had gone out there, and they were kind enough to provide that to us. And for those uses that predate required approvals, it's easier for us to put down as a permitted use. They've been going on so long, there's not really a new impact, and there's not been a, a reason for them to get those permits again. For uses where they have typically gotten temporary event permits, we are looking to keep the status quo, at least until the future plans come in. So some of those uses that were stricken were those uses that, that were given to us that had gone on, on-site, but there were also uses that had received previously temporary event permits or specific approvals.
So the difference is as of right versus having to come in and get a permit, which they had been doing in the past?
So the strike-through should not be misunderstood as the inability to have that on a temporary basis, but we're just not looking to make a change from the temporary use permit that they've been going through up until this point.
So it's exactly how it's been. They can continue having fairs and carnivals?
Correct. And there was a handful of uses that predate required permitting that we're willing and happy to put down for permitted uses, so they wouldn't come in for any permits for those. Those are the ones that are not stricken.
And the applicant's happy with this arrangement?
Probably not.
But I, I mean, we're, if we're keeping it the same, it, it shouldn't be too much of a problem, right?
We are in a dialogue with staff on some of these issues, and we will probably have that cleared up by this, the end of next week, but it, it's ongoing. We're not particularly happy with all of it, but it's the way that process works. So we're in a dialogue, and there'll be probably some, hopefully some minor changes, but I think we'll get it worked out.
So we'll know more by the next reading?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're not losing the ability, because I mean, it's one of the few sites in Benita that we can host things like that, so.
I, I agree, and the list is quite extensive. There's been going on, we've had records back to 95 that we pulled from Lee County. They don't have many records, any records, they tell us, beyond, before 95. And it's fairly substantial on the temporary use premise that has been going on for quite some time. But we're going to work it out with staff.
Okay, thank you.
If staff will work it out with us.
Okay, we're now, anything else? Counsel, we're going to open it up now for the public, John, unless you have something else. Is there members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Thanks for being here. Yes, please come on up. Welcome. How are you?
I'm good. My name is Barbara Morris, and I live in the Old 41 area off Goodwin Street, and wanted to talk to you a little bit about the safety of pedestrians and the drivers on Goodwin Street. There are three roads that go from Old 41 to Matheson. Dean Street, which has a 15 mile-per-hour speed limit.
You know what? I was going to say, I know, I apologize. Peter just mentioned to me, this is on something different, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I know, but it would, right, Derek?
Oh, I thought you meant.
Yes, no, that's okay.
Because public comment comes right after this.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'll.
Yes. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this item here? Anybody at all? Okay? Can we close that? We're, we're closed on public comment and, but.
Are you okay with it, Matt?
And, but anything else, team or staff, to add?
Nothing.
With, with the process? John?
No.
Okay.
You would just be moving this to its second and final reading?
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second to advance this to the second reading. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
6:28 is the door. Happy travels. Take care. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Where does that leave us? Mr. Rooney, we are going.
Make a quick.
Yes, yes, Peter.
Just before Izzy leaves, I want to make a quick comment. I want to thank the applicant and also our staff. From what I've heard from staff, there's been a lot of back and forth, but thanks to everybody, you know, working to get to yes on this. It's appreciated.
Take care. Thank you, sir. Yes, have a good night. All right, Derek, what, what do you want to do next? Do you want to go to public comment? Why not? All right, now, now, ma'am, we're going to move on to public comment. Please, please, and thank you for your patience. Thank you so much.
I haven't lived in Benita Springs too long. I've been visiting for a long time, but I guess I'm not real familiar with the, how things are.
No, 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 no. Don't worry.
I apologize.
Sometimes I'm not either, so.
So anyway, as a resident off of Old 41, we live on Lightner Lane off Goodwin Street, and sometimes the cars that are going up and down that street go with, a lot faster than the posted speed limit of 30 miles an hour, especially when there's backed-up traffic for events that are going on downtown. People get caught in the traffic, and then they want to get out of that traffic, so they make that left-hand turn and come flying down the street. Also, if there's backed-up traffic coming towards the roundabout, they make that right-hand turn and get out of the traffic that way as well. It is a narrow street. There are no sidewalks. There are people, you know, trying to walk up and down. There's a bus stop at the end of the street, and concerned for the safety not only of, you know, the driving, but the pedestrians, the kids going up and down the street. I know there was a fatality on that street three years ago. It was right in front of my mother-in-law's house, and I just think something needs to be done about the speed and, and the fact that there's no sidewalks. And I know you deal with easements and, and things like that, but out of the three streets that go from Old 41 to Matheson, it is the only one that does not have any sidewalks. There is no posted speed limit on Goodwin's, on Goodwin Street coming from Old 41. The only posted speed limit sign is coming from Matheson. On Ragsdale, the speed limit is 30. There are sidewalks, but the posted speed limit sign is almost at the end where Matheson is. And then, of course, Dean Street, you have, you turn off of 41, it's 15 miles an hour because of the school, and then it goes up to only 25 the rest of the way up to Imperial. So, you know, concerned about traffic, concerned about pedestrians. And if there's anything we can do to help be on a committee, to encourage discussion and how we can solve problems on that road, you know, I do worry about the people that are walking up and down that road. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we don't normally have this dialogue, but just wanting Arlene and Matt, have you gotten together with city manager? I think that would be a good first step.
I know at one point, my, my husband had talked to somebody, and I'm not sure who it was, about speed humps. We know they have them in Fort Myers, but we're told that the fire department would not allow that. That's, and I'm not sure, he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm not sure who he talked to.
We could get your information, and we'll contact you and.
Okay, great.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, hello. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. How are you?
Good, thank you. Good evening. I, my name is Lori, and I live in the Paloma subdivision. I'm a fairly new resident to Benita, just moved here a year ago. My concern is, and I'm sure you've heard this before, is about the motorcycles that race up and down Livingston, Imperial, Three Oaks. Okay. Unfortunately, I purchased a home that is adjacent to the wall, so I am affected by it every night, especially on the weekends. I have a petition that was signed by over 50 people, not a lot, but that's who I've gotten the petition for in Paloma subdivision, and just a couple in the Hawthorne subdivision. I also have a few reports that I've gotten from the Florida Department of Transportation that I've put together. I could email that to somebody. We are concerned that these motorcyclists who are obviously thinking they're above the law, my concern, I raised the concern to the sheriff's department, and I've gotten great response from three officers in that department, wonderful response. They told me to come here tonight and post my concerns to the council, and I'm sure this is not a new complaint. I'm sure there's most of you that are aware of these motorcyclists that race up and down Imperial. The reports go from 2012 to 2019. They are all down the road, starting from Golden Gate, Livingston, Imperial, Three Oaks, and so on. So most of these accidents, and there was just maybe four or five that ended in a fatality. Most of these were written up as operated a motor vehicle in reckless or careless negligence, ran off the road, road exceeded posting the speed limit, operated again in careless or negligent manner. There's, there's numerous, ran a red light, ran out of their lane, overcorrected. So there's obvious, there's an obvious concern to do something about the motorcyclist. I made the mistake of posting it on the next door, which maybe you're familiar with, and every community has one. So I went over there and I posted a friendly concern. If anybody's interested, I have this petition going to the council, and if anybody would like to sign the petition, to email me, I'd be happy to come by. Well, unfortunately, social media as it is resulted in a negative effect. So now, obviously, the motorcyclists have found out about my post, and not only do they race past my house faster, they now stop and rev the engines as they're going by. I work for Henderson Franklin, a law firm in Benita Springs. I get up at 6 o'clock in the morning. I work until all hours of the night sometimes. I need my beauty sleep. I'm not a young girl. So they are racing by at all hours of the night. Friday, I can set my watch by it. Saturday, I can set my watch by it. I'm at the end. And Sunday, I can set my watch by it. I don't want them to stop driving their motorcycles. I want them to stop racing, giving everybody hell, and the police officers can't chase them. It's what I've been told. So I would like the council to consider, please, do something about this issue. If it's, I mean, it's affecting three communities. It's, it's, something's got to be done. I mean, people are dying, killing themselves, taxpayers' dollars are getting wasted. So that's why I'm here tonight, and I thank you for your time. If you want the petitions or you want this report, I'll be happy to email it to somebody.
Yes, if you could please leave us that information and make sure we have your contact information?
Sure.
As well, to follow up with you?
Thank you.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
No, absolutely, and I'd like to, if we could set up a meeting, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
And I need to ask, out of curiosity, where, where are you a native to?
In fact, the sheriff, the head sheriff, Marsha, whatever his name is.
Armine Marcino?
Yeah, he comes right from the adjoining city. I'm from Michigan, and I just moved here a year ago, and I love Benita. I have a house in Naples as well, but I, I like Benita better.
Right.
And I work for Henderson, and I'm happy to be here. Had I known about this, I wouldn't have bought this house, but I like Paloma, and I love my house. And I don't want to sell and move. Again, I hate moving, so I'm just, this is, everybody in my community has said, what are you going to do? What are they going to do? And I'm like, I don't know. Unless you try, make it aware, no, no one really knows. So I thought I would just try.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And make sure, and like I said, I'll look forward to setting up a meeting with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move on now to the city attorney's items. Derek, item A is approve a settlement agreement and general release between Joel Price, plaintiff and defendant, City of Benita Springs, in civil action number 19 CV-00233-UA-MRM, green sheet 1908239.
Okay, and as you, as you recall, before the city updated its new website to bring, bring into compliance with ADA, we did receive a complaint, and it was, a lawsuit was filed against the city, as well as many other cities in Florida, claiming a violation of the ADA. The League of Cities is our insurance carrier, has been defending the case. A settlement offer was authorized for all League cities to resolve the issue. The League is paying for the costs that are involved, but effectively it drops the complaint, pays minor attorney fees, and sets up a process by which we indicate we are moving towards compliance, which the city has already been doing. So this effectively doesn't have any impact on the city, but will inoculate us from further suits from at least these plaintiffs going forward.
So move.
There's been a motion to accept and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Derek, anything else?
I do. I have one, I just want to confirm for the council, on August 26th, we're going to be going to mediation with WCI over the Raptor Bay cases. We had previously discussed having Councilmember DeWitt represent the council at that meeting, and seeing that he's not here today, I would like to confirm that, that he, that he can represent the city council during those negotiations.
And he, right, and he did.
He is available, yeah.
Right, obviously expressed, I won't be there, but would like to be there on behalf of the city, so that's great.
And I won't be there as well, so.
Yes. Okay. Derek, anything else?
Nope, I have nothing else.
Okay, great, thank you. City manager's items. Arlene?
For this item, I'd like Jackie Ginson to come forward. We're going to go over a few items for the Form-based Code, a quick update, and get some direction from council, a few items that we will then be reporting back to DPZ, working on that final draft.
Sounds great.
Some, two people have anniversaries, kids, keep going here.
No, that's, that's, I'm sorry, thank you. Welky, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Nice to see you. As Arlene said, we're just going to go ahead and kind of get some update and some direction from you on some topics that were outlined in the green sheet, so I will try to keep this brief. But for those of us that are joining us from afar, just to give them some history, these are some key dates, just to go over how we got to where we are with the Form-based Code with DPZ. We had the introduction workshop and presentation. Then we had another workshop in February. We approved the table of contents in March, and then DPZ was here with us just back in June, where we were getting some updates on the draft, and the draft was actually delivered to you. So now we want to get some feedback on some of those topics covered in that draft document. So these are the three areas we really would like to get some direction on. First is the, the boundary, and then density and intensity, and then height and floodproofing. So first here, you will see the Form-based Code map boundary, and what I try to do is identify items 1, 2, and 3, and put those numbers on the map, so you can see those areas that have been increased. So in the, the red area, you will see the current downtown redevelopment area boundary, and then you'll see areas 1, areas 2, and 3. Area 1 on the map includes areas where, for whatever reason, when the first downtown plan was created in 2006, the consultant at the time only incorporated portions of a street. And it is DPZ's philosophy and recommendation to go ahead and bring in the other side of the, of the street. So those areas in 1 on the map, you will see, it is for that purpose they're bringing[1719.63] So, those areas in one on the map, you will see, it is for that purpose, they're bringing the other side of the street into the overlay. So, you'll see industrial street, and then these other sections around the perimeter. Area two is the city's park, the middle school, and pool. And those were areas that were recommended to be brought into the downtown plan, based on some discussions with council, city administration, and so that is incorporated into that area for you. And then you have area three, up to the northern part of the downtown boundary, where, based on the public workshops, there were some interested property owners that were requesting to be brought into the downtown plan. And based on their feedback and coordination with DPZ, DPZ had incorporated them as such and labeled them with the transected scene. So, with that, we are asking for your direction, if you agree with those boundary expansions. And if so, we will communicate that to DPZ.
Council, what's your pleasure? Mike?
I think it's a good idea to bring in the other side of the streets. But it looks like on Beach Road, we're actually getting rid of the other side of the street, because it looks like the red line was on the other side of Beach Road, but now we're going to the black lines.
No, that's probably just a graphical, I would say, it means very fine, but that boundary is not changing. So, all those properties along Benita Beach Road to the north, they're currently in the overlay, and also the Benita Beach Road overlay. The Lowe's property is also currently in the downtown overlay as well. So, I think it's just a line work issue.
Sounds good to me.
So, on all three items, we're good to move forward? Okay, thank you. The next item is density and intensity. And what I wanted to do is just briefly go over what currently is in the adopted Conference of Plan and also the zoning code. So, density and intensity, it varies by subarea. Right now, for the downtown area, it's broken out into what we call subareas. And based on those subareas, we go ahead and outline the appropriate uses, the density that they're allowed at for residential, and then the intensity in terms of non-residential square footage. So, currently, the base density ranges from zero, which is in our commercial areas and the industrial, to 5.8, which is your single-family residential areas. And then six units and 10 units, which is in the multifamily areas. And then 15 units within the mixed-use areas. So, that is what currently is permissible. We also have in the Conference of Plan the option for bonus density. So, and an applicant or property owner could request that, either through the affordable housing density bonus option, or for downtown, we have a unique bonus density situation where you can go ahead and request density if you provide increased river access that's available to the public, infrastructure improvements, unique design solutions. So, and those density bonuses can range from none, because some areas are not eligible. Others can obtain four additional units, and others can obtain five. And then the floor area ratio is 1.2 for all non-residential uses. So, that's the current framework. And the proposal, again, we are moving to what we call a transect-based plan, and the density and intensity will vary by transect. So, what this does with these new transects is we're actually going to allow density back in to areas that previously were, density was removed. So, in some of the one-on-one meetings we had back in June, I kind of explained that to some of the council members. With the RMPK plan, what they did is they took density out of areas that previously had 10 units an acre. So, in order to encourage this incubator space, it's good to have dwelling units and bodies in those areas. So, we want to go ahead and introduce density back into those areas. Also, along where there were the commercial 3B areas of the plan, that too didn't have density assigned to it. So, we want to go ahead and introduce density back in. So, those areas were in the town core, and then along the areas of Terry Street, and also Old 41 intersection. So, these areas, again, we want to introduce density back in to allow a mixture of uses and really promote alternate development patterns. Another thing that's a little different is.
I'll drop you for a second. Allow density back in, are you saying it was commercial, so it just had intensity, but no density?
That is correct.
Okay.
On the current overlay, that is correct. So, areas 3A, 3B, and industrial had no density units assigned. Also, with the DPZ proposed plan, there is a recommendation to allow what they're calling, or I like to call it neighborhood commercial uses. So, commercial uses under 2,000 square feet within the T4 transect. So, that's a little different as well, so just wanted to go ahead and highlight that. But one of the changes where we really wanted to get your feedback was the density range that's being proposed. So, the density range is they're just going with a recommendation to do base density. They're not recommending incorporating bonus density. Because we're, the redevelopment area is in such a transition where it, we really don't want to go ahead and make people have to apply more. They, DPZ thought it would be a better redevelopment tool to go ahead and have that extra density already built into the plan.
Meaning you're giving them the bonus density? You're building it in?
It would be built in.
Meaning, for example, where it says 20, did it used to be 15 and five?
Correct, under the current plan.
You're adding five.
That is the recommendation. But that is where we're seeking direction for you tonight, so.
I just want to understand it, okay.
So, so the base density ranges for the six units would be in the T3 areas. The 10 units were in the T4s. And then the T5 area had the 20 units an acre.
So, we're looking, this is really a policy decision on whether, how you'd like to handle that, you know, the addition of the density. Did you want to provide as a straight allowance where they would not require public hearings to come back forward to you? Or do you wish to have staff work through a process where they would bring forward either enhancements to the community or such to be able to get that additional density?
So, let me ask, I kind of see both sides of it. So, like, if you had 20, if you got certainty, but the bonus allowed staff to ask for things that enhance the public realm in return for allowing more density. So, if we got rid of the bonus density and just kind of gave it to them, we wouldn't have that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Fred, did you have something?
Well, I think, I like that part of the bonus density, because that's.
You like the bonus.
That's why you get.
Speak, I'm sorry, Fred.
Why you get art in public places and things like that, because of them having to give up something back to the public to get that extra density. I think it's a good idea.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. You could, there's nothing to prevent you, of course, from.
To go back to where we were.
Or making, making those, the kind of policy decisions that you would have given bonus density for, making those requirements. And therefore, you're sort of saying, we're up, we're granting you additional entitlements, but we're now mandating some of those things that you might have considered for bonus density too. Obviously, that requires, if it's not on a case-by-case.
Who's going to write that?
That's why, that's why, that's why that becomes difficult to figure what that is, because you're not doing it on a one-on-one case.
I prefer to stick to where we, I think we.
I was just going to say, council, do we?
I think we should make a conditional on betterment.
Yeah, I like the bonus myself also. But if the whole thing was to get out of doing an additional public meeting and stuff, if there is like an à la carte menu, that maybe we can have what we're looking for and say, if you want this extra bonus, you need to have at least one of them. If you want a little more bonus, you need to have two of them. If you want the five more, then you need to have three. That way, we're getting things that we want, and they can choose what fits best for their project, but.
And they get moving too.
But, you know, include things like the public art, extra parking, you know, things like that.
And that'll fit into the automated system?
If that could be easily done.
Right.
Currently, we have bonus density for affordable housing, and what is the other, just.
So, with.
Just general statements, what do we have in there now?
So, affordable housing, there's actually two provisions under affordable housing. There's one that we reference as the option one, which is where an applicant can provide the affordable housing on-site, but then they have to manage it. And usually, that becomes cumbersome for some people to do the reporting and things like that. So, rarely have, I've never seen it used since I've been in this area. The other one is the cash contribution option with affordable housing. So, they pay on a per-unit basis, and it's based on an appraisal and a formula. And then the third option is only in the downtown area for the public river access, the improvements and infrastructure.
Now, the legislature has changed the rules regarding affordable housing requirements. And now, they require incentives. When you mandate affordable housing, you have to have an incentive, like a bonus density program. But it also has to be a dollar-for-dollar calculation, so we'll already be looking at that issue. Just to give you that heads up.
Well, I would go ahead with what Mike's suggesting, if it's, doesn't turn into a 30-page flowchart, you know, it's going to just make it more confusing. But if it works, it works.
But I think we need to work on the criteria, you know, the things that.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, all I know is about affordable housing, and you mentioned access to the water or something like that, and.
For downtown, yeah, that's, so the current Conference of Plan has, it mentions bonus density covered in, overall in the Conference of Plan. But then for downtown, it specifically has three different options through, again, it's the public improvement, access to the river, or a unique design solution where they can be awarded additional density. So, what we can do, we can go back to DPZ and recommend that. Now, are you comfortable? The, that's already available, so we can retain that same language as well.
The cash is only for affordable housing.
That is correct.
Not for the.
Can't use it for like.
Improve, no, not for public improvement.
But what we're talking about here, can we add that as part of the options to get the bonus density?
I'm not sure.
Let's, let's go back, and we've got to sort of revisit what's actually available.
The main, the main question that we had here, I think we've addressed, is the fact that you want an opportunity to get an extra added value for the density. We understand that, that's the first direction. If there's a way that we can do that in talking with DPZ and Derek, that's an à la carte menu that makes sense, then we can bring something like that back to you. If not, if we feel that the processes might still require the public hearing part of it, then we'll communicate that as well. But I think we know, at least the first part was, is not to just bring it automatically to the higher density that you want the opportunity to get additional community features through it.
And I just want to correct one statement on the record. The T4 transect actually is 15 units an acre, not 10, so I apologize for that. Okay, we received our direction, I'll move forward to the next topic. The next topic is height and floodproofing. So, currently in the Conference of Plan, the maximum allowable height is 65 feet from base flood elevation to the eaves. Now, when we drill down into the land development code, it varies by subarea again, or a geographic area. So, within the urban core, we allow up to 52 feet from base flood elevation to the eaves, with the ability to request additional height through an administrative process. So, you're looking at 54 and a half feet essentially. Then in our single-family areas, it's 35 feet, townhouses are 40, and then the multifamily is 55. And there's no mandatory requirement to floodproof. So, there's certain areas within the downtown where they're in a flood zone. And right now, we have no requirement for someone to floodproof. So, there could be a situation where, especially after we've done so many wonderful sidewalk improvements for a building to come in, and it doesn't really marry up with all the improvements that we have done. So, we wanted to go ahead and address that as well. So, with the proposal, again, the height, it's going to vary by transect. And what I did is I kind of clipped just three different transects. There's more transects that go into the height. But what DPZ has proposed is, instead of going with an arbitrary, not arbitrary number, but a number, they wanted to go ahead, or they recommended that we look at it by stories with a range per floor. And then the finished floor starts at the floor, and then you go to the ceiling to measure that floor. So, you'll see, for example, here for T5, T5 core, the maximum number of stories is four for the main principal building. And then if there's an accessory structure, it could have a maximum of two stories. And then when you get into the story height, they break down a difference in height for that first floor based on whatever the use is. So, in this instance here, ground floor residential, they could have a first floor that's as tall as 12 feet, or it could be 20 feet. If it's a non-residential use, it could be 14 feet or 24 feet. Different types of uses have different standards for what their first floors might be. So, that was the reason for the different ranges. And then when you get into your upper level stories, so second, third, and fourth floor, it could range between nine feet and 14 feet. And then in some cases where we have the floodproofing requirement, there's notes in that area. So, that was, their recommendation was to look at height from that standpoint, was maximum number of stories and maximum height depending on the floor, first floor and the floors above it. So, they went ahead and did that for each transect. So, we're used to always seeing a number. Here, they're asking or recommending that we look at it differently. And we wanted to see what council's thoughts were on that item.
My recommendation for this came from the concern of having a flat line or of building structures. And this was to provide for some more undulation between the buildings, because there would be variation between the stories.
And they're, actually, we talked to Javier today, and they're working on some illustrations for each transect. And he does know that canyonization, they hear that term a lot, is a concern of council. So, and so in that conversation, I also had Jay with me. We talked about the typical block size for downtown, maybe establishing some regulations on the maximum length the building can be before it has to have an interrupted break in the building roof line. So, Javier had some ideas and thoughts on how to go ahead and address those concerns, whether it be through the maximum length of the building, or how many breaks in the roof line a building is required to have. So, they're very cognizant of those concerns by the council, and have some thoughts on how to address that. The next slide, the next slide goes into the height and, or sorry, again, the floodproofing. So, on the draft of regulating plan, which identifies the transects, they went ahead and identified these areas in red where properties, when they're in a flood zone, they'll be required to mandatory floodproof their buildings, so long as they're non-residential, because residential can't really do that for building and FEMA reasons. But that is specifically labeled on the regulating plan, so we go ahead and address those items. So, we have a really nice continuous flow into our pedestrian system. So, with that, we're looking for your direction, if that is acceptable.
Sounds good to me.
But would that mean that somebody could build all residential right up on Old 41, and then they're going to be higher than the sidewalk? Because I think along Old 41, we're trying to get more of a mixed use with businesses on the first floor and then residential above. I didn't think we were really looking for residential along Old 41 on ground floor. But especially if it's going to be businesses, you can walk right in off the sidewalk. But then if somebody does nothing but residences, now you, now you have a height difference just to get in on that first floor.
Just to piggyback, I think Mike's totally right. I mean, you can end up just encouraging people to just do residential up in the air, yeah.
We'll look into that, because I also recall, depending on the transect, there's also different frontage types that DPZ is going to recommend, so we'll see how that is addressed. And I think in some instances, it's a four-feet difference in grade, but we'll definitely discuss that with DPZ. In terms of next steps, now that we have this feedback, we'll go ahead and have a conversation with them. As I stated before, they are working on some illustrations for each transect. And I believe they're trying to come back to us in September for Conference of Plan consistency. As I explained, we have such a detailed policies that govern redevelopment downtown. And if we are moving forward with the Form Based Code, there are some changes to the Conference of Plan that would be necessary. However, there are provisions in state statute where we can have concurrent Conference of Plan amendments going through. And in the event the Form Based Code is ready before the Conference of Plan, there is some flexibility for us to still proceed. We just couldn't go ahead and have those amendments effective until the Conference of Plan has been adopted and is effective.
I just want to make a comment on what I see, illustrations for transects. We had a clear consent, first of all, thanks for all the hard work, so, but. We had a clear consensus on this council that we wanted to focus most on Old 41 per se, and not have any of that slowed down by working on all the other transects. So, I hope that's, they're taking that to heart. Because when I see, maybe they're doing everything fast or something. No, no, I'm just looking at the last slide.
I was looking at the different transects, just.
Well, yeah, so what I'm, right, what I'm getting at is, you know, if they're over on Felts and further east, I personally, and I thought we had a consensus on council, we want them focusing. Because a lot of people are waiting to see what they should do on Old 41. And I don't think we want to be holding that up for all the other transects.
Sure, and I'll get clarification to make sure that maybe that's just the T5, T4, and they're not really.
Okay. Okay.
The T three, which is off of Old Forty-One.
Thank you, Jackie.
I want to add my
I gotta say, Mike then Fred, but how about Fred then Mike?
No, I want to support what Mike said. I, I don't want to see residential that isn't floodproof. I don't want to elevate it up off the side or anything.
Mike?
The slide with the stories, I, I thought the whole form-based code, we were kind of melding our written code into the form-based, but the written, yeah, the, the written says their urban core could do fifty-two feet plus another two and a half, which would approximately translate to five stories, but under the T five core, it's saying, it's cutting, limiting it at four. So it seems like they're kind of cutting down what our written stuff is, and when I thought it was just, they're putting it in a different format, but not changing things.
I, I did a rough calculation where I was like, okay, if I maximized each scenario, so if I did a ground floor residential at twenty, and then I maximize my, my non-residential floors, I try to estimate what the worst-case scenario could be, and it kind of depends on what the development scenario is and what uses go in.
But if they wanted to go to the minimums, then they, you know, if they were to do the minimums on them, then they'd be able to stay below the fifty-four and a half and have five stories.
Yeah, there's multiple scenarios, definitely. Would you like us to do more research to see if there's an adverse
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, I, I thought we weren't really changing things. I thought we were just presenting it in a different form that was easier for people to visualize. But, but also saying that, you know, going five stories definitely step backs, so that way the canyonization, so.
How did we get to be five stories? I thought in the downtown area that we were just focused in our original, even the scheme, the pictorial schemes that we had, none of them were five stories.
Well, yeah, but under the current code, you know, multifamily's fifty-five feet, you know, so you could build a five-story multifamily house or building.
It'd be hard, wouldn't it?
I mean, that's under today's code, but
It's to the eaves. What, what height would you have per floor by doing that? I don't think you could get five.
I don't know enough to give you an answer, but we, we can definitely, we can look into it, but as it's proposed, there's no transect that is greater than four stories. And even the T threes are at two stories for some scenarios, and I believe the T three restricted, the outbuildings are limited to one story.
Go to each table.
And on the T five core, the outbuildings being limited to stories, what would an example of an outbuilding be?
I'd have to defer to them. I'll verify their question. It could be a detached accessory apartment in the back.
But it wouldn't be along Old Forty-One, it'd be like on the backside or something.
Correct, it would be in the rear.
And what if, like say, on the bamboo property, if they wanted to do a parking structure and then build above the parking structure, would any of this hinder that?
That I, I would defer to DPZ. They've been working on the three different design scenarios.
Yeah.
So I can't answer that.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't see why they would do that, because it's, again, limited to the number of stories, so as long as you have that, as long as they're staying underneath that fourth story, and then there, there are some guidance in the draft code in terms of if you have a story with, a story, but a development scenario without a roof, at what point does that become a story? So there are some, there's supplemental language to address some other scenarios.
Okay, because I was just wondering if a parking structure is considered an outbuilding, say they wanted to put their amenities above the parking structure, like things like that.
I'll get clarification, but I don't see that being the intent.
Okay.
Council, anything else?
No, I'm good with what they got up there.
Okay. Anybody, anything to add? Jackie, you have what you need?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie.
Great, thank you very much. Arlene, other items?
No other items this evening.
Matt, you have anything? Okay, mayor and council member items, Amy.
I'm gonna defer to the anniversaries. And I just say happy anniversary to both of you, and are you all going to dinner?
Yeah, thank you very much. Laura?
We have a new constituent that rang me today, and she's very concerned and active in the waters, our waters around here, and she sent me an Imperial River bacteria report. And she pointed out that Astero just got, I think she said fifty thousand, she's not sure on the number, but fifty thousand dollar grant to study the Astero Bay. And, no, I mean, you know more.
They're, they're, they're actually paying fifty thousand.
Oh, okay. She thought it was a grant.
I was just gonna say, unless the grant kicked in.
Otherwise, we're
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, so, but I assured her that we were working on it and, okay.
I think Matt, I've been working with Matt on the same issue, and he's been engaging people from my community, and so he could fill, he could, I think it'd be
She talked to Matt.
Well, I think he could give us a summary of what's happening and, and what, I don't know if it might be useful to you, but he's going to be, poor thing, speaking to our community. We're scheduling a public presentation on that particular subject, but it's, it's, it's really, when you look at those figures, it's alarming, but there's a lot more to it than the figures, so that's all I can say.
This woman was along the line of what Deputy Mayor was talking about, let's find the source instead of throwing money at it. And so identify, like, she said the fecal matter is incredible, but, you know, is it dog, is it bats under a bridge?
There are some of that, two of them.
So, well, you both have kind of hit the nail on the head, but we've been talking, I've been talking to a professor from FGCU that is working with Astero to provide a scope and a proposal to basically do some monitoring that we'll be presenting to council here in the near future, really to understand what the source is, because there is a lot of nuance is in terms of what the source of this high feet, or high bacteria counts are. And so I've, I've already had a meeting with them and have been in discussion, and they're, they're working up a proposal that I'll be presenting for city councils.
Is that Dr. Parsons?
No, it's Dr. Duke.
Oh, okay.
Who is working with Astero with a team of other professors as well.
Our requested budget for this upcoming year does have funding for study.
Laura?
This is great, thank you.
Peter?
First of all, happy anniversary to both of you guys. Just a few comments. One is, I was struck by the woman she left, and it's kind of like, what do we, she had a petition that she went around to everybody for this intolerable noise. That shouldn't be necessary, you know? The petition shouldn't be necessary, and we have, you go back there, the petition shouldn't be necessary. So somehow, with all the good work that staff does, and I, we do have something on our website, we're at any citizen concern, but somehow, we have to have an improvement in the outreach. This is not a knock on what's being done, so that, you know, we've had plenty of other areas of communities, people just walked in, they talked to their council person, they talked to the mayor, and things get done. It's kind of like a lot for people to go through to sign a petition, in my view.
I just want to follow up that, because when she, when, when you gave your presentation, I thought, well, Paloma is in my district, and that's the first time
She talked to her.
I heard about it, and, and I guess maybe we haven't advertised the fact that the reason why we run in districts is that you are, it is helpful for residents to contact the, the district council person. So I, I was gonna get her information, I'm glad she's still here, so if you'll wait before we, I'd like to speak with you, because I'm gonna make a personal, my, my plan is to address her personally. So I was kind of surprised.
Anyway, one other thing, it was great to see our mayor representing us up at the Board of County Commissioners yesterday, and did a nice little stand-up, I must say, if you can, people have a chance to watch that. But seriously, it was good to meet our new, oh, who's winning?
Apologize. There you go.
Matt's won today.
Is that my alarm clock?
That's one.
Time to go, Red Sox.
That's why, Jeremy. But it was nice to meet our, our new county commissioner, and I had, just so we're coordinated, I had three things that I'm gonna reach out to him on, I know you're gonna, I'm sure others will too, the bike stuff, US Forty-One beach road intersection, with respect to Lee County, not MPO matters, and the third is beach access, so.
Excellent, wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
Mike?
Happy anniversary, guys, and I'm looking forward to getting out of here too, so.
No, absolutely, and God bless you, and, yes, God bless you and your family, Mike. Fred?
A couple things. Little bit of important trivia, August the first, Imperial River elevation six point five feet, today, nine point one three.
What was it two years ago, Fred? Did you look?
No, but you know, we're up at ten feet roughly is what we had just before Irma.
Ten, at Irma, yeah. Where is it, where was it?
What's the number?
Nine what?
Six point five, nine point one three today.
One three, ma'am.
In just a matter of a few days. I, I for one would request staff to ask the sheriff's department to crack down on these people until we come up with some better solution, because they're probably speeding, and they've got loud pipes, and they're, it used to be there was against law to have noisy mufflers and all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure they can do something. And want to compliment staff again about what a good job they did of reaching out to the people and giving them realistic information to allow them to decide that they would like to participate in the buyout program. That's it.
Can I make one other point about that? There's a lot of confusion around town, I don't, about that program, which obviously is totally voluntary, totally the option of the people, there's no eminent domain remotely involved, it's just information that's being presented on a federal program, and there's money on top of the appraisal, and they're free not to take the appraisal and not to sell. There's just stuff out there in, I don't know if the media writ large without anyone, talking about any one media source, where people are like, well, where are they gonna go? Well, do they have an option to stay where they are under the program? So I know
The confusion is that we don't get the whole seventy-five million.
Right, it's a competitive program. Yeah, so anyhow, just a note.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. And yeah, it was good to welcome our new county commissioner. As you know, there's been a vacancy there for quite some time now, and did meet with him. He does live in Benita Springs, and certainly looking forward to getting, I'd like to actually, if we could extend a, maybe a letter for me to sign, but a formal invitation to him to come and speak with us, yes, in, in front of council, I'd like to do that. Arlene and Matt, if we could please, and we talked about a few items, but, you know, he's drinking from a fire hose right now, so I do want to give him a little bit of time to get acclimated, but I also want to welcome him, and then quite frankly, we have a lot of issues going on right here, so we want to engage in an open and honest dialogue, and certainly looking forward to working with him and, you know, he and his team. So if we could invite him, that would be great, I would appreciate that very much. And that's all I have for tonight, and motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
And that would be of seven seventeen.
I, I had one thing that I noticed on page four. It said council member Flynn motioned and
Flynn.
And then council member O'Flynn seconded.
They didn't tell you about that guy?
Yeah, I, I haven't had good internet reception, so I haven't, I tried to watch it, but I couldn't watch the video, so I wasn't able to figure out, you know, what the correction is, but.
Rooney, you get more typos in the minutes? Is that what's going on?
I don't write, I'm
Pushing myself into the ground.
You see that, Deb, is that making sense?
Thanks, Mike.
God bless Gibby, he catches that stuff, that's good. I'm slipping. Thanks, buddy. Motion to approve the minutes of seven seventeen, there's been a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilman McRumby.
Aye.
Councilman McCarr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye. And then public comment, we have another public comment section here for anybody that would like to speak. Hello there?
Sir, I'll try not to keep you too long. Happy anniversary, happy baseball game. I wanted to remind everyone that on August the twenty-sixth is the ribbon cutting for our beautiful new library, and we're all been waiting for that, that's wonderful. And the other thing, you, in, excuse me, ten o'clock, ten o'clock on the twenty-sixth. And if you haven't seen it, go see it, it's beautiful. And the other thing, Antonio just reminded me that we want the public to know that the wording in the, on the consent agenda, there are no city funds are used to put on the Film Fest, this is all done by contributions. This is our sixth year, we're growing. What we've decided to do this year is we're gonna have with the gala on Thursday, which is November seventh, and we're gonna have the Young Filmmakers on Saturday, because it kind of made a long night, because you want to honor and show tidbits of everybody's film and everybody, so we thought this would work out better. The gala will be Thursday, the seventh, and the, the Young Filmmakers on, I think it's eleven o'clock or so, but we have time to talk about that before. Thank you, have a good evening, bye.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Thanks, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, we are adjourned.